All right, we're about to get started, but of course, the computer wants to act up. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. Oh, hi, Charles. My name's Erin Henry. I'm the Towns Director of Land Use and Community Services. I do have a role here in the Towns Planning Office, but I'm going to turn it over to our Planning Director, David Fields, shortly, and then after that, to our consultant Ted Brovitz, who's been working with us on the zoning proposal. This has been a long time coming. Before moving to staff, about a year ago, I was actually on the Planning Board here in town for about 11 years. And the Planning Board has been working its way around town, looking at certain zoning districts, specifically the I-1 district, over the last few years. So I wanted to give you a little context and a little background on what we've been working on before turning it over to David to give you a little bit more context on some numbers, and then ultimately to Ted to walk you through the zoning. There is a sign-up sheet going around. If you could sign up when it comes around, that would be great. I also do want to take a moment to introduce a few folks or acknowledge a few folks. Most of the Planning Board members are here, sitting in the back quietly. Peg Zelinski, Jim Sears, our Chair, Bill Prentice, member Charles Smith, and our Associate Member, Nat Sears. We have the Chair of the Board of Selectmen here, Mr. Bennett. I think there's a number of Town-- a couple of Town Meeting members hiding in the audience, so thank you very much for coming. And I think, again, for context, we've been working on this proposal for downtown for about 18 months, I would say, or 12 months, pretty seriously. We've probably done four or five events over that time. We did a specific workshop. We had a kickoff, a general kickoff. Then we reached out to the businesses in the affected districts. We reached out to the property owners in the affected districts. We've also done some intervening updates to the Selectmen, to the Planning Board during this time. We've also met with some neighbors that required some specific questions that wasn't necessarily, you know, good for a forum like this. So we've met with a number of residents in and around the district to deal with some specific issues that they've raised. But I wanted to give you a little context before we jump into the specific proposals. I wanted to give you a little bit of background on why are we looking at downtown at all? And this started really in about 2004, when the Planning Board was working on a community development plan with Mr. Brovitz, who back then was working for Dufrane Henry, which became a number of things. Then he got smart.
Hey, there back then.
Yep. And then he got smart and went out on his own. So Ted's been working with the Towns for a very long time and has a really good handle on this. So in 2004, we were looking at the zoning in its totality. And one thing that rose to the top at that time was the Industrial 1 district. Now, on this map, this is the modern zoning map, so it's changed a little bit from what it looked like in 2004. But at that time, we were going after the Industrial 1 districts, of which there was about 12 or 13 different locations around town that the Industrial 1 district existed. In that work in 2004, that was identified as the zone that was most mismatched between what the current market would be looking for and what you could actually build in that district. For context, 55 feet by right industrial uses are allowed in those districts. Not much happened in the immediate aftermath of 2004. And then in 2006, we had the Danversport explosion in a site that was zoned Industrial 1. And that really spurred things from there. So we got serious, and I think I joined the Board right as we were looking at the Harbor Street and the explosion area. We did go to Town Meeting with a number of tweaks to the Industrial 1 district. We created the Danversport Industrial District, the Danversport Village District. We left some areas alone because the neighborhoods weren't ready for that and didn't like it. And so again, we weren't trying to push anything over on anybody, so we moved on. A couple of years later, we ended up at the Tapleyville area. We did an overlay district in Tapleyville, and I think the best example of what you'll see under the zoning there is the redevelopment of what is now Daniella's. While that didn't actually utilize the zoning that we've got on the books there, it fits in perfectly with what we were doing, and that was going through a different permitting process while we were developing the zoning. So that's a really good example of what we were trying to accomplish there. From there, the Planning Board decided to take on the northern end of downtown, the Hotwatt area. Again, kind of using that Tapleyville experience as a model. Come on in, guys. There's still some chairs. So then we moved to the Hotwatt area. That was a lot of outreach. I think we did something like 24 meetings over 18 months. At some points, people were begging us to stop having meetings. Let's just get to Town Meeting already. But all that process really paid off, and we got a very strong support from Town Meeting. I think it was past 140 to 2 or something like that. So we like to think we got it right there. And again, as kind of an endorsement of the work there, the Selectmen asked us to look at doing similar treatment to the downtown. It's hard to see on this map, but basically what you think of as Danvers Square is technically zoned C-1 or C-1A, surrounded by the Res-1 residential neighborhood. The Planning Board was going to be moving on to High Street area, so that's basically from the fire station down to 128. That's all zoned Industrial 1 today. Because these two areas-- so the Selectmen kind of wanted us to look at downtown. The Planning Board was probably moving on to this I-1 area anyway. We made the decision that because of their proximity to each other, we should probably just do this one time together because the impacts-- you know, we didn't-- we felt dividing that up would be harder to deal with than if we just did it in one fell swoop. So that brings us to the current initiative. Like I said, we started kind of in earnest, I believe, last May, was our first outreach event on the downtown corridor. We've been working with another group on some conceptual plans for the I-1 area. So that kind of brings us to tonight. We did, like I said, I think I mentioned it offline earlier. We've done about four or five of these. We did one specifically to property owners. We've done one specifically to business owners in the district. And then tonight, we did an 1,100-piece mailing. We did everybody in the district out to 300 feet. So we mailed out over 1,100 pieces of mail for tonight. And I know we'll get into the details, but I would say it's not too early to give us comments and feedback. We're still here. It's still malleable. We want this to be right for the town. We're really here to listen and to explain to you what we're trying to do, and we want your feedback on that. So that is my introductory spiel. And now I will introduce Mr. Fields to kind of walk us through a little bit of the context more from a data-driven standpoint and kind of how this fits into a bigger vision that we see for downtown.
See if we can make this work.
Yep.
Oh, all right. All right, thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming out on this potentially rainy evening. As Erin mentioned, my name's David Fields. I'm the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the Town. Some of you may have seen this slideshow as part of the outreach we've been doing throughout the town, either with the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, or at other various events. We've been to Rotary. I think we did Kiwanis, a number of other meetings that a similar presentation to this has been given. This is an abbreviated version tonight, so we don't have to bog you all down in tons of numbers. As an aside, we're going to be publishing a series of trend reports. My office will be. Hopefully, those will be out soon. They'll definitely be out before Town Meeting. That goes into this quite a bit more in-depth than we are going to tonight. But for those who are interested, there'll be a paper version of something similar to this in the future. And if you email me or sign up for any of our mailing lists, I can let you know when that comes out and get it to you. So basically, I want to discuss why we're here tonight from more of a regional focus. So what's happening in Danvers? What's been changing? What's not changing? And a lot of this doesn't necessarily have to do with things that are happening in town. It could be things that happen regardless of what the residents of Danvers do, the boards and committees, the various decisions they make, things that are just happening regionally, and what that means from a demographic and socioeconomic standpoint for the town. So by and large, the population of Danvers is not necessarily increasing at a rapid rate, not nearly like some of our other neighboring communities. Change isn't really happening due to a tremendous amount of development, as we usually call it, new growth, new housing units, new commercial development. There is some. Obviously, I'm sure you've all seen it. But by and large, it's not going gangbusters necessarily. That's neither good nor bad. It just is what it is. But the main driver of change that we're finding in town is change in the existing housing stock, essentially meaning turnover. So what's happening with the sale of existing units that are already on the books? So we do in town, on average, about 500 housing unit sales per year. As you can see, there's a little bit of ups, a little bit of downs, but for the most part, it's between 450 and 500. So what that generally means is that 4.5% of our overall housing stock turns over every year, which isn't insignificant. If you do some quick math, over 10 years, that's about half the housing units in town will have either been sold or resold in some way, shape, or form. So again, not insignificant, which is why when we were going through our demographics, that definitely stood out to us. As part of that, with the housing unit turnover, you see a lot of change in the demographics in existing neighborhoods. So who's living there, where they're living, and how long they're staying. So this is a map showing change in census tracts in Danvers from 2010 to 2017. So as you can see, some colors are darker, some are lighter. But the main takeaway is that certain sections of town, if not most of town, has turned over about 20% of its population in only seven years. There's notable discrepancy down here. That's pretty much where Liberty Tree Shopping Mall is. There's not a lot of housing units or folks really living there. There are some, but not a tremendous amount. So that's probably more than you'd expect. It was more certainly than I expected when we were doing our research. But just an interesting fact is what it is. So I'm probably going to run through change basically over the last five years from 2013 to 2017. But if anybody has any questions in the interim, feel free to jump in whenever you feel like. So current estimates show in town that our population is increasing. So it's right now, well, in 2017 anyway, is about 27,500, give or take. That has been increasing. I don't have that raw number right now. But it's been increasing at a rate that's higher than the rate that households are increasing. So what we believe that means is there's more individuals living in the existing housing units. So every time one of those sales happens, the family that was there could have been an elderly family of two. They sell and move out. They're probably being replaced by a family of four or more. So our household number is staying the same, but our population is increasing. Does that make sense to everybody? Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward? Okay. You're also getting wealthier. So on average, pretty much like the rest of the country, though, the higher earners are earning more faster than everybody else, which kind of explains the differential between median household income and average household income. So the average is being dragged up by those households that are earning more at the top end of that spectrum. Again, not good nor bad. Just is what it is. The main takeaway from this slide, it goes over a change in the existing housing stock, particularly with two bars showing structures built between 1970 and '79, and '40 and '49. Generally, those are smaller units. A lot of those are two-bedroom units that were built either post-war or right at the end of when the-- basically, the money given out after World War II to build housing units ran out. We're losing those. We've lost about 25% of those over that period. So part of the main takeaway from the zoning proposal that we're offering is those units could be replaced downtown. So we're looking to make more diversified housing stock in town with two-bedroom units, one-bedroom units, and other types.
Why is it just downtown, anyway?
Well, so part of that is what we're going to talk about tonight. A large part of Mr. Brovitz's presentation is going to touch on that. But mainly, we're looking there. The infrastructure's already there. We don't have to run sewer and water extensions further out into other areas of town. There's already a little bit of density, and there's commercial-- there's commercial area already there. So there's a place for people to go to shop. They may not need a car. They can walk to what they need to get, so.
We have moved on to plenty of commercial and downtown--
Still got to drive there, though.
Downtown, is this proposal going to address the traffic downtown? You can't-- it used to be, you know, three, four minutes to drive down High Street.
Yeah.
Now, in a given, you know, rush hour, it's 25 minutes to get down High Street.
That's true. I think we're going to get there.
More businesses, more people.
Yep. No, I definitely think we're going to get there as part of the overall scheme tonight. But in the short term, traffic is an issue downtown. We are aware of that, so. Thank you. That, I can't help you with that. That would be nice, yeah. So getting back to this, this map really is just up here to show you national trends. So we're up here in the corner. The rest of the country is everywhere else that it is. As you can see, some areas are contracting in terms of growth. Some are growing. But long and short of it, we're at best treading water and not really moving ahead that fast. Again, not good nor bad, just given the state of everything in the nation and the housing need in eastern Massachusetts. We're not really building as much as other places or as we could. One of the interesting facts that we came across looking at the regional data is the region itself has added about 300,000 jobs over the last 10 years, but only 30,000 housing units. So part of the issue you're talking about with traffic is the mismatch between where people are working, where they're living, and where they're going. So if we're not offering housing units for them, but we're offering them jobs, they need to live somewhere. So if they live further away, generally, that means they're driving more often to where they need to get. So that does explain a little bit of the traffic. But in general, kind of tastes like a combination of who cares and so what, which is why we put this slide up. But realistically, through the zoning proposal, we're trying to cater to the needs of older households and for those folks who are moving back home, either after college or just starting out. They probably don't want to live in their parents' basements forever, nor do their parents probably want them there forever. So by offering them a different type of housing unit than most of what's already offered in Danvers, hopefully, we can provide for their needs a little bit better. So where we're at right now, our current growth opportunities exist in town. As you can see where the red circles are, pretty much out here in the general areas that are zoned Residential 3, which is more or less large lots, single-family zoning. That would be through the subdivision process. Again, we're not saying that that process is evil in any way. It's not the devil. It just-- it is what it is. Every one of those units that are built out there requires a brand-new road, a brand-new sewer line, brand-new water run to it, all the associated infrastructure that goes along with that. Again, not necessarily helping to alleviate your traffic problems or anything else associated with more driving. So in order to recalibrate, we're trying to put more of that growth and focus it downtown. Again, hopefully, that'll allow more people to walk to what they need to get, be able to shop locally, and not necessarily need to traverse the remainder of town all that much.
I'm sorry. I just can't buy it. What you're suggesting is that just the people who move into these new housing units downtown and shop downtown, but all these other-- all the people in the rest of town, these outlined areas, are still going to be coming in from downtown. More so, if there's more business, more places to shop. Is that actually going to be increasing the amount of traffic coming into the downtown?
Yeah, creating a much more vibrant downtown, I think. I think that's kind of what we're going for here.
Do you actually want to see that, more people coming into downtown?
I don't think it would be a bad thing for the businesses that are there and that are going to be there. I do not live downtown, no.
Is anyone here? Where do you live?
I live on the corner of Park and Danvers.
Park and Danvers, okay.
And I think--
I'm right. So you'll be affected then by this?
Potentially.
Yeah.
But I think let us get through the presentation. I think when we-- at the end, when we have a chance to go back and forth more, I think we can flesh out some of your concerns. I'm sure there's others that also share concerns about transportation and traffic.
Well, just some of the things that you want to put, you made as far as the-- you know, there's not enough small housing units. Small houses for, you know, young kids to buy into. A lot of that is because the zoning board here in Danvers has allowed a lot of the smaller units, especially on the non-conforming lots, to be expanded into much bigger buildings, more expensive buildings. That's what's gotten rid of a lot of the housing stock that younger people could have bought.
Certainly could dream, but let's get through it, and then we can have this-- I think, let's get through the presentation, and then we can open it up to a more--
Okay. You just can buy any questions there.
No, no, sorry. Sorry, yeah.
Not at the-- let's get through, and then we'll give you all the time you need.
So with that, that was it. So it was a lot of numbers. Any other questions, please feel free to email me. I'm available anytime. But I'm going to turn it over to Ted Brovitz, our consultant for the project, to walk you through the specifics of what's actually going to happen if it passes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I have a fair number of slides, so I'm going to go through them fairly quickly. And zoning is not the most interesting topic, and, you know, if you're looking at different things in terms of planning. But we're going to try to make this interesting and informative as we possibly can. So we started this process a couple of years ago with the I-1 district up on Maple Street. We went through a process with the people in that area in terms of what they'd like to see in the future, what they thought-- what they thought that could happen up there would be improvements in terms of open spaces and streetscapes, their relationship with the downtown area here. And ultimately, as, you know, Erin mentioned, the zoning got passed. And basically, it stays an I-1 district, but there's an overlay on top of it that allows for mixed use, including those smaller housing types, so that we can provide opportunities for young people that are just starting out as well, older couples that are trying to downsize but stay in town and be close to downtown. So that was sort of the first step in this process of creating this new zoning that provides, you know, a limited amount of mixed use, but also provides, you know, some other amenities in terms of, you know, higher-quality open spaces and some things that make it a more lively and vibrant district. That's really what we're after on this first segment of the corridor, but now moving down into the downtown area, the downtown neighborhood, and then ultimately down into High Street area right here. So this is the proposed zoning for the whole corridor, starting with this first segment on Maple Street. Then we've got the downtown core district right here, which is the old C-1 district, which right now only allows commercial industrial uses. No residential is allowed there, which is very unusual these days because most downtowns-- most towns in Massachusetts are converting back to mixed use, allowing, you know, units above the stores, allowing residential developments on side streets because it's proven that introducing residential into the downtown helps local businesses, and it provides an opportunity for people, you know, if they're just starting out or downsizing. And basically, it's, you know, people get a chance to live, work, and play in one district. So it's a real-- it's really sort of as much a housing opportunity as an economic development opportunity for the community. And a lot of towns are now embracing that. And then down here, this is the High Street mixed-use sub-district proposal, again, converting another industrial district into potentially some combination of commercial and residential uses. Now, we don't want to get into a discussion tonight about traffic, but we are looking carefully at how we can manage traffic into the future, understanding that there's going to be growth even without this proposal. There's going to be growth in congestion in downtown. There was a traffic study done a year or two ago, I think it was, that talked about, you know, that the volumes that might grow in the downtown area, traffic might grow, and what impacts that might have on the corridor, as well as at the intersections, and some potential solutions. There was also a parking study that was done a couple of years ago, which we have looked at carefully and tried to integrate some of the recommendations, the zoning recommendations, that came out of that study. So we are well aware of the traffic and parking issues, and we know that's going to be a factor as we move forward with these zoning proposals. And we hopefully will have some good ideas for how to address it in the future. So this is a different type of zoning. This isn't conventional zoning. Really, what we're trying to do is understand the characteristics, the property characteristics, what the, you know, what the opportunities are in terms of future development or redevelopment, or additions to buildings, and essentially take a step back and get a sense from the community what you'd like to see here in the next 20 or 30 years. And then try to create some sort of overall conceptual plan that can be then turned into zoning standards and a zoning map. So that's what we're doing. We're actually taking a step backwards in this process and then moving forward, you know, based on the overall ideas that people have into, you know, calibrated zoning for these individual districts. So if, you know, if anybody was part of that Maple Street process a year or two ago, we had a series of workshops where we did scenario building. We had these little styrofoam buildings on a map, and we let people sort of play and sort of place buildings around so we get a sense of, you know, building patterns and scales in terms of what people want to see in the future. The brown buildings represent potential new development, and the white buildings are existing buildings that would stay there. And then, you know, how, you know, other things factored in, such as streetscape improvements, parking improvements, and those things that, you know, every neighborhood would need to consider if they're going to allow growth. We also did what we call a visual preference survey. So we showed a series of images to participants at these workshops, and they gave us their feedback of what kind of images, what kind of development they thought was appropriate for this neighborhood and for the downtown area. So these are some of the higher-rated build, you know, development images, you know, showing sort of a moderate scale of mixed use. And that also became a factor in putting together these zoning standards. And then ultimately, you know, putting together an overall concept. Again, this is Maple Street, Hobart, Locust, the old Hotwatt is right here, you know, showing that there are some, you know, potential for new development integrated with existing buildings throughout the neighborhood. And then, you know, the integration of good streetscape improvements and some smaller open spaces that, again, fill out that neighborhood. So we did the same exercise for downtown. And, you know, we had a series of workshops last summer and came up with some ideas. So this is, you know, on the left, these are existing conditions for the Maple Street corridor, downtown, Danvers Square. And then potentially, in the future, what could happen if, you know, some of the zoning was changed? So for example, what you're seeing here with these brown buildings are-- those are second- or third-story additions. Those are single-story buildings where you might add a second story on top, and maybe that could be residential, and maybe it could be commercial offices. But you're basically giving people the opportunity to reinvest in their properties, which they don't have that opportunity today because you're not allowed to do any residential at all along the Maple Street corridor. And frankly, without that residential piece, the incentive or the financial, you know, package or picture doesn't look good in terms of reinvesting in the number of these properties. You know, so we're looking at, you know, those sorts of things. This is an example of the Star Cleaners right here, next to the hardware store. You know, they said it was okay to take a look at their property and see if there's a, you know, what could happen if it was redeveloped. So we're showing again, you know, some parking behind that could feed the whole block, some plaza space where you might have some outdoor dining, some mixed use in the building up front. And then, you know, sort of nice streetscapes, you know, nice sidewalks and streetscapes along Maple Street as a potential redevelopment project. And then this is the Townsend Energy property, you know, stuck in the middle of a well-established older neighborhood. You know, if they were to relocate at some point in the future, what could happen there? And this is showing a series of small townhouses. This is the old depot that could be restored and connected to the rail trail again. And this is showing a spur that would go down, you know, across Elm Street and further down the corridor behind High Street in the future. Again, just doing some scenario building if there is an opportunity in the future to redevelop or reconfigure some of these lots and what would it look like under the current-- or under the proposed zoning.
Is the zoning going to require that all this--
No. No. It's just a scenario, yeah.
So your picture could just be all asphalt.
It could be all asphalt, like it is today, pretty much, yeah. 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 And we're just saying if you were to change the zoning. Right now, it's zoned for industrial uses. That's an allowed use in that neighborhood. So if you change the zoning to more, you know, scaled-back residential, a little bit of commercial mixed use, then you could do something like this where you get a series of townhouses, a little pocket park, restoring this old depot, which would be great because it's on that property already, and then making this spur trail that goes down, heading south towards-- parallel to High Street. So again, it's just scenario building, but you couldn't do that today. You could do it under some of the things we're working on.
But I guess the point is, again, is the Town isn't going to be going in and making sure this happens.
No. 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 This is just saying what could happen if you were to change the zoning. Town doesn't-- no, Town doesn't have the authority to do that.
You would have to land it.
What's that?
It'd be landscape.
You'd have to go before Planning Board.
Oh, it'd have to go before Planning Board, yeah.
Yeah, you'd have to have that.
But you couldn't take, you know, Townsend-- and convert it into a townhouse development. I'm sorry. Did you have another question?
Where are all those houses going to put their cars?
Well, there's parking right in here. There's parking on it right now. There's a parking lot right there.
There ain't enough.
Well, I think it is, yeah. It's like two per unit.
Thank you.
Sure. And then this is over, a little cottage development over on Charter Street. There's a lot of interesting little cottage developments in and around the downtown area, and we like that. We wanna sort of encourage more of that in the future. You can't do it today, because the density won't allow that today. But if you're gonna do that, this is a parcel that's up on, by the railroad, by the rail trail, where you're sticking in like, you know, six or eight units around a common open space with parking over here. And these are popping up all over the state, and they're very popular, they're very successful. And it doesn't take a lot of land. This is only about 20,000 square feet. But again, you're creating, you know, small, single-family homes, two-bedroom homes. Again, if you've, you know, you've got the four-bedroom house out in, in the sub, you know, subdivision, and you wanna be closer to the services and the retail and restaurants downtown, you could live here and be a block from Maple Street. It's not for everybody, but there certainly is a demand for this in communities like Danvers, which is predominantly large, large lot, single-family homes. So really, what we're trying to do with the zoning is sort of capture this, you know, the, the, the development characteristics of, you know, village centers and surrounding neighborhoods, and, you know, translate the ideas that people have into this new package of zoning regulations. And so what this type of zoning really much allows for is, you know, good, you know, moderate scale mixed-use development. Because it's a walkable district, it's our downtown, we really wanna put the buildings up close to the sidewalk or on the sidewalk, tuck the parking behind it, connect the parking with adjacent properties if you can, allow some shared parking, using a shared resource. And then what's critical is having, you know, a, a relationship between the buildings and the streets and the sidewalks. So, that's really, you know, the, it's sort of an integrated approach unlike what you have typically with conventional zoning, where it's, you know, it's all about, you know, your, your lot, what happens there, and there's no consideration in terms of what happens beyond your, you know, your lot. So, it's so important in, in these older neighborhoods and these older village centers to really make sure there's a strong relationship, a compatible relationship between the public side of things and the individual lots.
Do you wanna put them right on top of the street so you can't put anything?
Well, no, I'm saying like Maple Street, you've already got the buildings right up on the street. But today, what you can do is you can knock-
You don't wanna beautify it.
We wanna beautify it, right.
Well, if it's on the street, it's not gonna be beautified. There's no green spaces, no.
Well, but, but if you're on Maple Street, if you're in the core of downtown, those are all up on the street today. You, under the curzon, you can knock them down and put parking in front of it. And that basically creates an auto-oriented district, and this is a walkable district. So we wanna make sure we maintain that and improve it. So, for example, at Danvers Square, you've got a parking lot in front of the building. Why not, you know, either turn that into an open space where people can gather, a square like it's supposed to be, like it was intended to be, or build a building up close so that you can have, you know, even outdoor dining patio in front of it? But you're basically adding to that walkability, that sort of pedestrian environment. That's really what we're after in these older, in these older downtowns. And in the neighborhoods, it's not right up on the street, they're set back, there's a front yard, you know, as there is today. But we're basically replicating those, those patterns, because those patterns are proven over centuries, and that's really what people are going back to, is these traditional village centers and traditional neighborhoods. Yep.
You know, traditionally, growing up in Danvers, it was considered a farm town that became, you know, suburbs. So can you give me an example of what would be a current existing neighborhood in Massachusetts that you are trying to emulate with these projects? Because we see, our idea of what Danvers is and why people moved here and lived here, and how you see it change, so what are you trying to get Danvers to look like? What's the current town?
Danvers.
Danvers.
Rantoul Street and Bevins.
See, that's the fear, that's the fear.
No, it's not Rantoul Street, it's not Rantoul Street.
Well, with the green space on Rantoul Street and the height where-
Any, any, any old village center downtown in the surrounding neighborhoods, the pattern is what we're after. The pattern is not-
Give me a concrete example, what's the town we're looking to build towards?
For example, Brattleburg, Vermont. You know, they've got-
More local, what's-
Concord, Massachusetts. They've got standards that basically allow things like these cottage courts. They're very careful about, you know, if there's a building that's torn down in these neighborhoods, to make sure, doesn't have to, not concerned about the architecture necessarily, but they're worried about the pattern and making sure it fits in with the rest of the neighborhood fabric. So it's those types of standards we're, we're trying to, trying to emulate. Whereas conventional zoning, including in Danvers, you have, you know, lot sizes are twice as big as what's already there established in the neighborhood. You have minimum setbacks, which means you could, you know, put your, all your cars in front, and you could have a house set way back. You're basically, you're, you're changing what's already established and what makes it, you know, an interesting and viable neighborhood. So it's those types of things. So a lot of towns are going back to this, reexamining their zoning, and their downtowns and their surrounding neighborhoods, they are, you know, they're, they're changing them so it's, it's calibrated to what's the best of those particular districts.
How does it change the residential streets, like the usual, like Park Street or Warren? How does that change us?
It, it doesn't change the, the residential streets. In fact, what we have, we have like standards for the streetscapes, so that, you know, instead of, you know, you look in the subdivision regulations, they're just basically covers curb to curb, it doesn't really talk about planting street trees, making sure the sidewalks are a certain width. That's really what we're after. So if there's a new development and requires some streetscape work, we wanna make sure that it's, it's, it's connecting to the, to the rest of the, the properties that are on that block and that there's street trees planted and that sort of thing. So it's, it's not just what happens on your lot, it's-
But in terms of residential zone now, is it gonna become residential slash commercial now?
Uh, no, no, no. In fact, it, you know, it already is in, in that, most of the neighborhood, it's commercial industrial. It's what's called C-1A. So in fact, even though it's predominantly residential with some commercial in it, you can do industrial, you know, and you could like Townsend and, and those sorts of things. We're trying to scale it back and make it more small, commercial, office-based, and small shops, and then residential on top of that. Right now, you're not allowed to do-
Ted, if I can jump in, I think to that point a little bit, what we've seen in the neighborhood around, like I'll say Page, Essex, Charter, there's a number of things going on that have, a number of developments that have happened that have gone through the zoning board of appeals process. That is an inherently unknown process. So you as an abutter or someone living in that neighborhood, we don't know, you know, this year that one was acceptable, it got approved. Next year, a similar proposal down the street may be disapproved, and then last year, they approved a conversion of another dwelling to allow something. This is trying to make sense of that and say, rather than continue to let this neighborhood turn over on an ad hoc basis, this is an attempt to find standards, to peg ourselves to, to define minimum acceptable densities that would allow a predictable understanding of how the neighborhood may change over time. And again, I wanna highlight the point that we're not going to be the town, we don't do development. Zoning is the ultimate public-private partnership. We've had zoning on the books for probably 75 years here in Danvers. We, the community sets the, the rights of what you can, may do with your property, and then we rely on the private sector to exercise those rights, and hopefully, when those rights are exercised, it results in the vision that we laid out when we set the zoning to begin with. So in this neighborhood in downtown, what we're trying to say here is what's acceptable going forward? Let's have a conversation about that, rather than continue to let these one-off developments come through. Maybe it's okay today, maybe it's not, we don't know, abutters don't know. We're trying to bring some level of predictability to what's going on. And again, I would say, over time, we, the proposal, as Ted said, is kind of scaled back as we better understand what's really going on in the neighborhoods and what's possible and what people think they want to see and what we think that the, you know, network in the, in the neighborhood can handle.
Were you getting into the nitty-gritty of what the standards are?
A little bit, but, you know, I think they're online, right?
Yeah, and I would say, again, and, again, trying to be all things to all people tonight, that probably wasn't going to be able to be possible, but if you wanna come in and-
I looked online, and it's, it's, you know, it's kinda like, there's so much information, you can't really figure out what, what's on there. Maybe I could just ask, is there a standard as far as the height of the allowed building versus the width of the street?
Yes, yes.
What would those be?
Well, it, it depends what district you're in. If you're on, if you're on Maple Street, the core downtown, it's, it's 40 feet and you have to be stepped, no, it's 30-
45, I think.
45 is a maximum.
So that's quite a bit higher than what's there now, right?
Well, no, it's not. What's the standard now, 55?
In I-1, the standard is 55.
Right, right.
And we require-
Is there a building like that though now?
Oh, there's non-conforming buildings that are that tall today.
Okay, is it, well, most of downtown, it seems like it's one or two-story.
Correct. And so in this district, we would say 45, but the fourth floor has to be stepped back.
Step back.
So that's like a setback, but up inside the building. So, the first floor may be on the street, because that's where Goody's Ice Cream is. We want that right there on the street, but if that building goes to four, we wanna push that fourth floor back to prevent rain tool street from happening. And so there's, in the code, there's a detailed diagram of-
Yeah, it's-
Based on the width of the street-
That is in there, yeah.
What this plane emanating out from the street, and you can't push your building into that plane. And that's to prevent, it's hard to see, again, we have a graphic, and I would say to anyone, not just to this gentleman, give us a call. Again, you seem to have some very specific concerns. We can give you two hours, three hours, whatever you need, we're happy to, to give you, and that goes to anybody. And we have done that. We've sat with several people for as much time as they need. So I'm happy to go through that, that level of detail. I don't know, in fairness to everybody, I don't know that tonight's the night that we're gonna be able to do that. But again, we're hoping to cover the high points and answer what questions we can tonight, but we're happy to sit with you, whatever you need.
I don't, I don't know the name, but Susan. I, I wanna piggyback on what Susan was getting at, and, you know, in terms of like emulating a town, basically, there, there needs to be something that we can wrap our minds around in terms of what is securing this vision, which, you know, I haven't been privy to it, because probably I haven't come to enough meetings. But, all these, you know, attributes, the whats that we're talking about tonight, everybody can head nod and say, you know, it's, it's gonna look prettier than what's there currently, and it's gonna look attractive. Nobody's gonna argue with, you know, having a more attractive town. But if you, if you consider kind of the budding towns that are doing well economically, you know, tax dollars and have no shortage of people looking for homes and, and want their kids to stay there, grow up, as far as education and everything else, the common denominator with all those budding towns that, you know, we could, we could justifiably say we wanna emulate, have green space very close to downtown.
Yep.
On bias, I have two kids, I live on Cherry Street, one's three, one's five. I would love to think that we don't have to move in three years, because the only place they can hang out in front of is, you know, good-looking buildings on Maple Street. And, you know, they, they can't drive, they can't go to Endicott Park, I, I'm not gonna permit them to walk to the middle school. The reason we bought here is because we knew there was a park. We walked in the park, we walked downtown, we were looking in 2005, everything was, you know, skyrocketing. Then in 2010, something came in our MLS listing. We already had an understanding of Danvers based on the natural draws for most, you know, which is common among basically everybody, green space, park space, Austin Commons. A guy donated that because he knew the people wanted green space. So I, I, I feel like these attributes, like you talk about these whats, it's easy to nod your head and say yes, but, you know, you're basically handing us a bucket of money. Obviously, that has to regenerate itself, not for year one, but for the sustainable future, and it has to be self-sustaining from day one. So, so the vision, you know, isn't, isn't, I, I don't really understand or how it's been articulated. I don't know who you're trying to appeal to in terms of getting renters to ultimately buy houses, or, or, you know, competing with other towns to get new people to buy houses here, you know, is there gonna be destination businesses? So, you know, what, what is the objective in terms of, you know, what do we make, need to make in terms of tax dollars, and why are we doing this? Then we could talk about the what and the how, but, but who-
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think a little bit, and again, it was at the very end of David's slideshow. I mean, we've done a preliminary build-out analysis, and the community has about 500 to 1,000 conventional units left to be built over some amount of time, right? That we don't control, again, when people choose to exercise their rights. Right now, the town has over 10,500 single-family detached homes and about 500 of anything else. So, the apartments up at Avalon and the developments on Route 1 are about three-quarters of the everything else. So what we're trying to do is provide, and I, I say this, I'm not, this is not necessarily, you know, gospel, but right now, what the region wants, as David described, you know, with 300,000 new jobs in the area and only 30,000 new housing units, people want to be here, they're working here. Our current zoning is calibrated to cater to those people. What we're hearing through these planning processes is long-term Danvers residents who have either gone through the raising of the family and want to stay in town, but there's no product for them. We have a current board of select member who is leaving the single-family home she raised her family in, because, well, anyway, their life has changed, and we don't have a product for them to move into. I mean, we have, like, I live in a multifamily, I know there's multifamilies around, but that's not what they envision. We don't have that. We don't, she's going to have to find it in another community. So I, to your point, I feel like what this is doing is we're trying to cater to what we're hearing from Danvers residents, current residents who've participated in these processes, what they want to move into or what their children want to move into to come back home, because they can't afford a single-family home in this town. Our average sales price is approaching half a million dollars, if not more, and that's not something a young 30-something couple can afford. So again, I, I get exactly what you're saying, and as far as, you know, at the end of the day, we're still an overwhelmingly single-family detached suburban community that will be where you want to raise children. We're talking about 500 to 1,000 in the aggregate, not just downtown, I'm saying everywhere in town, 500 to 1,000 of something else, whether that be a row house or a townhouse or whatever, you know, an apartment above a development, you know, downtown. And again, that's, as David said, we want a little bit, we wanna try to help downtown with a shot in the arm. I mean, and I, I don't mean to be critical, but I've been here for 12-plus years and, you know, we've got a lot of sub-shops and a lot of nail salons. If that's good, let's keep doing what we're doing. But I think what we're hearing through these processes that we've been running over the last decade is we're getting tired of that.
But who's going to populate these? So, in other words, you're, you're just putting a fresh coat of paint on everything and changing, you know, the store's name. So, you know, what is going to kind of create-
Who's buying the 500 units now? Every year, we're selling 500 units.
Right, but, but, so you talk about Townsend. Here, here would be my kind of closing point, just 'cause I don't wanna kind of monopolize the floor here. Obviously, you know, you don't, I don't open a toy store and tell my kids to pick up, pick every toy they want, and then we're gonna go, you know, we strategically, you know, if they're good enough or whatever the situation occurs, you know, it's a strategic decision from, are they gonna learn from this? Are they, you know, is this going to classically condition them not to, you know, beat up each other, whatever it may be? So, when you talked about Townsend Oil, naturally, the idea of money out requires money in, right? So, so the first thing you, you, and I'll use your exact words, you said a little park in the back. It was 80% condos, and that train station is going to take a million just to fix up, of course Townsend's gonna get it too. I mean, that's, that's nothing they're, they're holding on to dearly. So why, why is the vision not more bold and more innovative, and why, why are we afraid to compete beyond what we were or what we are? You know, what is, what, what is the, kind of the, you know, the wizard behind the curtain that won't allow us to actually truly have a say in terms of knowing the vision, what's the why, you know? And then we could talk about the what and the how, how based on size, location, budget. And then we could address the what, in, in terms of- Um, and then we could address the what in, in terms of scale, um, you know, based on location and size and budget. But if we don't truly have a vision, you know, as Susan pointed out, what town are we gonna emulate? That, I mean, that's the perfect question to ask. There was no good answer to that.
I mean, Danvers, that's, I think, our answer is we like the bones we have. Downtown, I mean, I, I live downtown.
Well, well, then why, why were, why were all the stats showing people leaving at an enormous, enormous, not, a large number in terms of percent? You know, you're showing this turnover, turnover, turnover. Um, I drive through downtown, I'm right on Cherry Street, made kids loiter just in front of CBS and, uh, literally getting kicked out of CBS, I've seen that, you know, Dunkin' Donuts and, and Supreme Roast Beef. But I, I just don't think we're taking this seriously enough. And we're letting kind of a third party just take over and we're just supposed to, you know, say, oh, yeah, it's, it's gonna look prettier then. And that, that little cafe behind the building, I mean, how are people going to get in there? Is it, uh, you know, it all sounds nice and cutesy and all that, but, um, who are, and you said thirty, thirty years down the road. Thirty years down the road, you're gonna have the same conversation.
We should.
But you're gonna have less space, you're gonna have less op-
I mean, this is not, this shouldn't work for a hundred years.
But you're gonna have less opportunity to do something about it because you've already made your steps. So I, I mean-
But you could argue that about the zoning we have in place today, that somehow we foreclosed options fifty years ago when we put I-one zoning downtown.
Well, I, I don't, I don't mean to be, I feel like you're just being competitive and you're not really listening to me, understanding the vision. But, but maybe I'm just kind of late to the game, so I'll, I'll just, you know, stick while there.
Yes, sir.
I, I would like to touch upon what you just suggested. I, I know Alan, we're friends, we're neighbors. This is his first experience with this. I've been involved in this for many, many months. I am very aware of what's happening, the plan, the goals, the ideas, and I support it a hundred percent. This is what needs to happen for this town. I encourage all of those who are just experiencing this for the first time to learn more before you stop poking holes in it.
Okay.
Tell us more.
Let's let Ted, let's let Ted get going now.
Well, again, you know, you really have to read the, the zoning, 'cause this is a high-level discussion. We can't really get into the nitty-gritty 'cause it would take a very long time and, you know, we only want to spend an hour of your time here. So, and, and, you know, we encourage you to come in and follow up and ask, you know, stop by the planning department and get more information because we're here to help. And we want, we want you to be engaged, we want you to understand what, what we're trying to do, you know, with the planning board and with the downtown community. And, uh, you know, we're, you know, that's why we've had, we've had so many workshops over the last couple of years. And we understand that not everybody has the opportunity to participate. And even though you may be late to the game, you know, that doesn't mean you don't want to have a say, so. Yes, sir.
Were they afterwards?
Yes.
I'd like to follow up on the comment because I think it was very, very poignant. Uh, one of the notes that I made just made to myself, why are we really doing this? And really, I think that's the question that's being raised. And let's just follow up to my next question. Who is driving this proposal? Is it a perception by the planning department, by the state legislature, or the state governor? Because the governor has been very outspoken about building out in the surrounding communities outside of Boston because their prices in Boston are going crazy. And he wants to relocate these people into our communities. But my most important question here is, is that we went through this a year and a half ago? On the Hot Wat proposal, the zoning for Hot Wat. And at that time, I heard all of these kinds of questions, we had all kinds of workshops and everything else. But what I'd like to ask is, what are the results? Or what has transpired since that zoning has been put in place? Have we seen any results? Should we wait and see what the results are gonna be at the Hot Wat proposals? And then move forward with the rest of the square? Because what we're doing, we're biting up, biting up more than what we can chew right now because we don't even understand what the effect of the current zoning, because this is an expansion of that one. And what have we learned? What is going to happen over there? Has anybody looked into it? I mean, the planning department should be looking into it.
Well, of course, we will have, I mean, the Lees control a large part of that area that was rezoned in December of two thousand and seventeen.
Correct.
As I said before, we don't control when, where, how they choose to exercise their rights. We try to check in with the Lees, you know, every four to six weeks, we check in with the Lees to find out if there's anything going on that we need to know about. I know that they have started some exploratory work on their site, uh, reaching out to the marketplace. I believe they issued a RFP for consultant help, um, but nothing's hap- And to your point, I mean, that's exactly what, I think, part of what happens when we put this in front of people, especially for the first time, is we think, oh, my goodness, this is really big and everything's going at once. And I think the example you raise is, is a good one to, to underscore that we don't anticipate this to be, uh, you know, a watershed moment and there to be a flood of new development after this. And I think to your other point, um, you know, why are we doing this? Part of this will be because we are so built out in the rest of town and I, and I, we need areas to grow. There is underutilized properties here. And part of this, at the beginning of this, was for at least the downtown portion of, of why we were looking at I-one, at Maple Street and High Street, is how can we buttress downtown? How can we have a more vibrant downtown? And so again, I don't, we're not, you know, I think it's residential development can leverage additional economic development downtown. Um, and so I would argue that we're, we're kind of checking a couple of boxes with proposals like this because, again, we're, we're helping those businesses by bringing people closer to them. Um, we're getting some reinvestment in properties downtown. That, again, I think we could use a little shot in the arm downtown. Um, and finally, we need some opportunities for new growth to help keep taxes low and defer, um, certain expenses. And I know you know, new growth is part of the equation of balancing our budget every year. And if we don't have growth opportunities somewhere in town, then the only other way to pick up that is either to diminish services or raise taxes beyond what we would normally want to raise them beyond. So again, I think the proposals like this, again, we may not have it exactly right. We may not be hitting a grand slam, that's why we're having events like this, so that we can get the feedback, to fine-tune the vision, to fine-tune what we will tolerate. Um, but again, I think that's, that's the overarching goal. And again, every member of the board would probably explain that a little bit differently, but, um, so. Why don't we let Ted get through the rest of this and then it's, we're gonna have a lively conversation after he gets through some of the more details.
Okay, so, um, again, because it's a walkable district, we're trying to come up with some good strategies and design standards for what can happen along the streets and the sidewalks, you know, how businesses can possibly pour out onto the sidewalks with things like outdoor dining, you know, even if it's just a couple of tables and chairs, uh, maybe some displays. You know, things like that, that sort of create this interactive and interesting, lively, uh, downtown. And, uh, and, and we're putting the other standards that would allow these things to happen, which aren't allowed today. So why are we doing this? You know, it's, we're trying to, again, you know, replicate or, or integrate the, the standards that are, that reflect the best characteristics of our downtown area and our downtown neighborhoods. Um, we want to make sure that in the public realm, those being the, the open spaces in the streets and the sidewalks, that those are well-designed and they are, you know, they are complementary to the businesses that are adjacent to them. We want to provide housing choices, as we've done over that, you know, uh, quite a bit tonight, you know, providing housing choices in a place where we already have the infrastructure, where people can, can get services, where people can find something to eat, they can shop, all within walking distance. And we're trying to revitalize, you know, our center. And, and, um, you know, fifty years ago, it was zoned for industrial purposes with the, with the hopes that we would bring in manufacturing. And some of it happened, like Hot Wat, but a lot of it didn't happen. But we still have this old zoning in place so that, you know, just a block off of Maple Street, you can have a car wash, you can have an auto body shop right next door to, you know, two-hundred-year-old houses. So we're trying to replace antiquated zoning with something that makes more sense and reinforces the, the, the commercial patterns that are on Maple Street and then the residential patterns that are just beyond that. That's really the, the primary purpose of that, uh, of, of this zoning, is to revitalize and to reinforce the better characteristics of our downtown and our downtown neighborhoods. Um, so we have, uh, again, this is the proposed zoning, this is the, the core district, you know, centered on Maple Streets and Elm Street, Connet Street, and that's where the C-one A is today. And then this is the downtown neighborhood right here. Uh, so this would replace the C-one and the C-one A. Um, and so, for example, on Maple Street, what we're saying that basically between Park Street and Hobart Street, we have what we call a frontage zone. So what that means, that we're trying to cluster businesses at ground level on the street. We don't want the residential or industrial uses, you know, on Maple Street at ground level. So everything on both sides of the street between, you know, along these core blocks is scheduled for commercial uses. You know, it could be retail, it could be restaurants, it could be personal services. But it's really important that, that we, we build up that cluster, uh, for commercial, commercial uses. Then up above that, it could be commercial uses or residential uses. And then deeper into the lot, you could have commercial and residential uses. But those, those buildings that are fronting directly on the street, we want to make sure that there are commercial opportunities so we can create a cluster of activity that draws people to the downtown. We also have identified open spaces or potential open spaces in the downtown area so that there's a requirement for, if you're doing a redevelopment, that you have to have fifty percent of your, your lot dedicated to open spaces. And that open space has to have a purpose. If you don't have the room on your lot to do that, you can contribute to an open space that already exists, such as the historic cemetery or the rail trail or eventually Danvers Square. You know, we're, we're talking about possibly creating a square where the square was meant to be, uh, where people could gather, um, and, you know, you could have, you know, music and food venues and that sort of thing. So-
How do you contribute?
If you're doing a redevelopment of one of these properties downtown and you don't have the space, you don't want to utilize space for open space, you can contribute a little of that space to a public, a public area.
We pay you, we get paid.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, this would all, all of these developments would go through, it's not like-
Oh, it's all, yeah.
... allows this and then you're off and running. I mean, all of these proposals go through planning board site plan approval. So it's not, that's a negotiated, like, I don't want to do it here, I'd rather do it there. That's part of the public process, that's part of the actual get-permit. So again, it's not the developer just saying, well, I'm doing this over my, over your dead body. There would be a conversation around what is an appropriate place, if that's not where they, you know.
It would have to be within that district.
It had to be within the district, yeah, yeah.
Isn't that the point of this? We're talking about, we're setting one standard, everyone has a goal, and I just say we can negotiate depending on whoever wants to buy this lot? I, I don't understand that.
No, you, you have an option, you can put your open space on site or you can contribute to an open space that benefits everybody in the district.
But we would only, again, I think through the permitting process, if that was a better deal for the community, then that's, we want that option. It's not gonna be the developer telling us, well, this is what I want to do. They have to put that on the table, we have to understand the alternatives. And then part of the permitting process will be talking about whether or not that is a deal we should say yes to or we should walk away from.
Uh, there's also what we call a transitional buffer zone. So, you know, if this is all commercial zoning right here, we want to make sure that we protect the surrounding neighborhoods so there's an additional buffer and screening requirement between commercial uses in here and then residential over there. Uh, going further down the corridor and to the High Street, just, you know, from basically the fire station south towards the interchange, um, there was a conceptual plan, uh, put together in the last couple of years for that as well. And, you know, that's showing sort of an internal network of streets uh, so that you don't have to have everybody pour out onto High Street making turns, you can get around internally here. That spur trail would come down the backside of that. And then what they're showing is sort of an integrated, uh, changes over time of commercial and some residential mixed-use development along the corridor. Again, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow. The town doesn't really have any control over the pace of development. But we're taking it, again, in one of those old industrial districts that's underperforming, underutilized, um, and creating some new rules so that there could be reinvestment in that corridor and can benefit, um, the businesses that are there or future businesses, as well as creating housing choices, um, that we don't have today. So here's the district, again, here's a fire station here going down towards the interchange. Um, this is a property that's all zoned industrial one today that would become part of this new mixed-use district. So, yeah, we talked a little bit about this, I don't want to get into the weeds too much. But basically, you know, you know, understanding the patterns of a traditional develop, uh, neighborhood and traditional downtown, it's really important that the buildings are close to the sidewalk. You know, there's a setback, that there is some kind of utilization there, such as outdoor terrace or small plaza or pocket park, you know, such as you're showing right here. Um, then there's some basic standards in terms of the height of buildings and the, uh, at street level, the, the ground floor transparency. Again, at least in the core area where you've got, you know, you're trying to create a cluster of shops and restaurants and such, you want to make sure that you have good window spaces here so it's attractive as you're walking up and down the sidewalk. Uh, and then there's some suggestions and guidelines in terms of, uh, architectural design characteristics, things you want to think about as you're building your building or reconfiguring your building. And this is the, the model we were talking about before in terms of the, the height. So that at, you know, at the street level, the height could be twenty-five feet, which is basically a two-and-a-half-story building. Uh, if you're going up to the full forty-five, you either have to step back the upper floors to fifty feet or you set back the building to fifty feet to get that. So, 'cause what we're trying to do is avoid that canyon effect, 'cause Danvers, 'cause Maple Street, I know, Maple Street is a fairly narrow corridor, it's, you know, it's forty to sixty feet depending on where you are. So if you're building up to that, where you have, you have two or three-story buildings today, two-and-a-half-story buildings today, we want to keep that, that sort of enclosure, but we want to allow more investment opportunity stepping back further behind that. And that's what we did up in Maple Street.
That's High Street, on the side streets, uh, with the lots probably are only a hundred feet deep or so.
Yeah.
What do you do in there?
It's, it's, the, the maximum height there is thirty-five feet, so it's a three-and-a-half-story building.
And that's what it is today?
That's what it is today, yeah.
Ted, wouldn't they be, they're different, under these design guidelines, there can be different standards as you step back from the main street.
Yeah.
On the main street for the commercial area, you're gonna have your buildings right on the street like you have now.
Yep.
But as you get back further in the district, as you get back towards residential, you may have some commercial. But what we want to see there, or I want to as a planning board member, would be to have whatever goes in there to be maybe more residential and in character with what is already there. Many times on this board, we've had something come through to us, someone wants to build up or change their building. They're in a nice neighborhood, all certain size houses, but they're allowed into zoning a certain height and they come in and they build something that just doesn't fit. So under this, what I see under this particular, um, zoning initiative is that we're now taking some control. We can't tell a developer exactly what to build, but we can set standards now that whatever is built fits into the area. So you're not gonna see commercial buildings on Cherry Street, further back on Cherry Street, right up on the street as you would see in the downtown. You would see, you might see some commercial there, I think there's commercial on Cherry Street now, there's lawyers offices and things like that. You will see some commercial, but they're gonna meld into the street. And then we're also providing housing, smaller housing for people. I'm one of those people, I don't think I'm gonna be moving, but I would love to live downtown. I walk downtown, that's part of my walk, my five, four-and-a-half mile loop. I would love to walk down to Kathmandu in the morning and have a cup of coffee. I'm retired, I don't have to go anywhere, I don't have to take my car. So, um, we would encourage someone like me to get out of the hu- So we would encourage someone like me to get out of the house I'm in and go downtown and live closer to the town, on Cherry Street, I think Cherry Street is Delightful Street, I think all those streets on either side of Delightful. But this also gives us a little bit more control over what could be there. Right now, under Industrial One, all they can go in there is industrial, right? Industrial, commercial.
Commercial industrial.
In commercial. So you could have a house burned down and tomorrow find some type of industrial building beside you.
So watch there, the, the, as far as the set the leads for business units.
Come line them and tear down houses.
A lot of times these things kind of get sold on, we need to provide housing for the younger folks in town, we'll, we'll build condos or whatever for them, or they, you know, space above a building. And then assuming you pick up the paper, they're $500,000, $700,000.
And that's a problem. That's a problem.
So is there a provision in town to make sure that that, that's, you know, that it actually is affordable?
We, we're, the overall proposal requires 20%. At the end of the day...
Why not 100%? 100% affordable.
Well, you...
If we really want to get to affordable housing, 10% or 20% just keeps the standard.
I understand, I understand. But, sorry, just, that's a, that's an interesting point. I think what we're doing as part of the base zoning proposal here is that all developments will require 20% affordable, like, that means something very specific to the state, that's, so I say capital A affordable. There will be, and we have a provision on the books today that allows smaller projects a little bit of wiggle room, but at the end of the day, all projects in the district will contribute to affordable housing in the, in the town. To your point, controlling sales price, this is something we've looked at very closely since we've begun here. I've been on staff for about 18 months, David, for a little over a year. We are monitoring closely what median sales prices are. At a certain point, we're going to want to institute some sort of price control above what the state would consider affordable. I think in our research, you know, most people would say somewhere between $400 and $500,000 is probably what, like, a reasonably priced unit, they can get their heads wrapped around, something that might even be a little high.
That's for a 30-year-old? I would see that as a 10-year-old.
Right. No, but I'm just saying, in general, right now, we're seeing the sales prices go north of half a million, and at some point in the future, we would like to index some sort of requirement, this is the planning staff talking, not policy boards. We want to try to build into some, into, something into the zoning that will require us to start taking a chunk to preserve the middle tier. So what you see in more built-out communities is they have a lot of housing at the very high end, and they have all sorts of housing at the low end because they've met their 10% responsibility under state law. They have nothing in the middle. So we're trying to keep an eye on that, but right now, the market just isn't there, and I don't mean that we're, we're letting them dictate to us, but right now, the price controls, we're still kind of in that sweet spot where we don't need to institute that sort of a control in the zoning code. But certainly, it's something we're watching, and when that time comes, we've already talked to a development, there was a potential developer that we've already talked to about that, we've already worked out the prices, and it's just not there at the moment. So, but overall, we're not going to be able to control sales price. No one builds, I will say this, no one builds to sell the cheapest unit that they can build, right? So you hear today, a lot of criticism of development in the metro region is, oh, it's all luxury housing, luxury housing. Well, if you were investing in your property and trying to build something and you could sell it for $250,000, but market demand was $500,000, how many, you know, people would be saying, well, I'm going to sell it for $250,000 just because? So the reality is, is that we need to know what market rate is, because that is basically where the development entities are going to go. And when that price point moves past, you know, some bright line, we are going to kind of be monitoring that to make sure that, at that time, we insert price controls to kind of ensure that there's some, some sort of housing that's getting captured in that bucket.
The, the other thing is, as far as, in town, water use, water, you know, we're, we have a water ban every, for, probably for the last 30 years, we've had water bans every year, and you have to keep building, 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 more and more households.
So part of this, again, goes back to the slide that David kind of concluded with about recalibrating local zoning, because again, while a two-bedroom unit downtown still uses water and still uses roads and may have, you know, make the traps, those units, we can show you based on real data, those units don't use as much resources as that same unit at the end of a cul-de-sac, two-and-a-half mile away.
But still, just as an absolute basis, it's more water use.
Right. So, and again, this is kind of representing the first part of a recalibration. Again, we're not trying to outlaw conventional development in the R3 district, but we need to be aware that those developments have a lot of other costs to the community at the end of the day, that these development proposals, they still have costs, but they're not as much.
Will Mr. Sears in the back have a comment?
So I was just going to state that a lot of this planning, a lot of the size units we're talking about are one-bedding units. Due to the density and the parking, you're looking at, a lot of the new stuff will be one-bedding units. So right now, if you look at Locust Street, 20 Locust Street, those are more primarily, there's going to be 24 units, mostly all going to be one-bedding, it might be a couple, two-bedding. And then on Maple Street above the Hair Salon, Georgie's, those are all one-bedding units. So we're not talking about, you know, two-bedding, three-bedding units, we're talking about one-bedding units due to density, due to parking, availability, and so on. So we're not talking about developers building three-bedding units downtown. They're most likely going to be one-bedding units for the empty nesters or the young, young millennials that's going in. So I think that's important.
I don't know if that's...
You're referring, yeah.
Well, it's, when it drives the price down, is what I'm saying. You're not going to get $500,000 for one bedded unit. You might get more affordable, the $200,000, $300,000 range, or even studios. They, they may have studios, that's the one above Georgie, I mean, there's a market for those, there's a market for studio parks, there's studio partners, so.
This is just planning. Now, we're looking to, what this is, is looking at the zoning, what's currently there, and how we can best address the housing, how we can best address, actually, I always look at zoning as protecting, protecting the area too. Protecting what you have there, making sure that what's going in there will meld in well. And then addressing, I mean, there's a lot of space over buildings downtown, those buildings were all two or three, many of those buildings were two or three stories. They took out those stories during the depression because they had to pay the taxes. And, you know, putting what was there originally and allowing housing above that. So I think that, you know, right now, it's zoned commercial 1A, commercial one, commercial 1A, which is industrial and commercial, that's it. Can't build any new houses unless you go before ZBA. And then there's really not much control at that point of what goes in there once it hits ZBA. It's up to ZBA to decide what they're going to allow or if they're not going to allow. So this is a way of also kind of addressing a number of needs, but I also look at it as a way of protecting also what we have. We want, everybody keeps saying, what do you want Danvers to look like? We want it to look like Danvers. There was a slide up there a little while ago that looked like Danvers, even with the angle parking, like Danvers yesterday, like I remember Danvers, and I'm not a long-term Danvers expert.
Do you think if the, the, the actual standards were power street by street, it'd be more reassuring?
Well, I think, and, yeah, we'll, we'll, it, it's hard to navigate, but I would say like, you know, our entire zoning code for the entire town is about half an inch thick. The entire zoning code for the downtown will be half an inch thick and come with a second book, another half an inch, to describe all of the design standards. So again, we're making a concerted effort to calibrate look and feel, so it's not just like in the old days where it's like, well, I can do manufacturing, whatever that means, provided I'm 25 feet back from the street and 15 from my sideline, that's about all we cared about. This zoning proposal is, you know, like Ted was saying, do you have enough glass on your first floor to be an attractive business? Like, we're going to make you do that. Is your building going to be articulated enough to have visual interest so that it's not just a big blank wall as you walk by? Those are elements that we've never attacked, tackled before, and that we first instituted in 2017 when we did this first zoning around Hot Lot, and we're trying to carry that all the way through downtown to make sure that those little details that make a building work or not work are, again, we may not hit a home run, but we put a lot more thought into it than we ever have before. And I think, based on, again, where we're at, I think we have a successful model and paid a lot of attention. I'm happy to, again, sit with you and go through it.
Honestly, I think what, there's a certain amount of cynicism that's maybe misplaced to the, the planning board that's actually more actively directed to the zoning board, because you're right around...
And they're not here, so have that.
But so maybe, so I, maybe I should say at least that, that we've, some of it has been misplaced in, in your direction.
Yes, yes.
I would like to ask the audience, as they've been asked, to hold questions till the end. We're losing audience, and they could have probably gained a lot of information from the rest of the presentation.
Okay, okay, let's, let's finish up here.
Some of these questions don't apply to all of us in this room.
Okay. So as Erin just mentioned, you know, rather than having one size fits all with the dimensional standards, you know, setbacks have to be 50 feet and frontage is 100 feet and all that stuff, this, this type of zoning basically has specific standards for the type of building, and because they're all different. Everything from, you know, cottages on the top, you know, with a small footprint and small lots, or a, a number that are grouped together around a common open space, a cottage court, to larger mixed-use buildings and even civic buildings. So basically, if you're building a, a new house, basically, you've, you've, you send it back and you set it up to create some privacy. So you've got a front yard, and typically, you're, you've got a couple steps up to your house. That basically creates privacy with a residential building. If you're doing a commercial building or a mixed-use building, you, in a, in a downtown setting like this, you want to bring it up, you want it to be at ground level so it's easy to get into, and you want that ground level to be transparent so that it creates this interesting and inviting building, it's permeable building on, on your main street. If you're building a civic building, typically, you know, like this, like a small civic center or library, that kind of thing, those are set back even further and set up higher because you're trying to create some prominence. So all these particular characteristics are integrated into the zoning rather than, you know, one size fits all. So that it reflects what's there today, the best of what's there today in the downtown, as well as the downtown neighborhoods. So the, the, you know, the densities, you know, this is similar to, or what, you know, into the uses, basically, I don't want to go through all those tables of uses, but basically, what we're allowing is a moderate level of mixed-use in the downtown core and a smaller level of mixed-use in the, in the downtown neighborhood. Basically, again, downtown neighborhood is commercial, industrial, so a lot of things go in there that would really have a negative impact on the residents there. So we're scaling that back and really focusing on professional offices, some personal services, at a small scale, that could complement the neighborhood rather than, than impact negatively the neighborhood. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Judith Truett, it's 18 Alden Street. I'm a little concerned long-term that we might run out of parking. So, does a parking garage fit into any of these?
The parking, yeah, it's showing, yeah, that's, that's a possibility, yeah, that's integrated in the zoning, it's on the concept plan.
So it'd be like general commercial use?
Yeah. It would be allowed in the downtown core area, yes.
Okay.
Yep. So let's skip that. And then zoning, basically, the zoning that we did for the first thing, the first section, the, the Maple Street section, basically, with cottages, you've got a smaller density going up to mixed-use buildings, 20%, 20, 20 units by right, and we needed that in order to qualify for the state's Smart Growth Program, and then 36 units by special permit. Again, trying to create a balance between density and investment so that, you know, we, we create enough density opportunity for people to reinvest and revitalize these properties, but not so much that it's going to overwhelm the site. So we, we took a long time discussing, you know, what was appropriate density by right, and what was appropriate by special permit. And again, when we're in the special permit area, when we're at the higher densities, there are requirements that are attached to those special permits in terms of public benefit. And that can be anything from parking, public parking, it can be public open spaces, and it can be additional affordable housing units. So that if you're going to, if you're going to, we're going to give you that additional density, it's tied to a public benefit that goes back into this district.
Just for context, the 20 Locust Street development, and I hope 40 people know that that building's coming along, I hope most people think it's, the feedback has been positive that it's looking very good, that is 24 units to the acre. There are, I think there are 24 units in that building, and it's about, it's a little un, I think it's like, yeah, 40,000 square feet and change. So that is about the biggest thing, and again, that box doesn't necessarily hit all of our design standards, but the basic program of being close to the street and the overall density, that would kind of represent the upper end of what would be possible under this proposal along the corridor.
And then there's the tone parking across the street.
Right.
Has a separate lot for parking.
Satellite parking, yeah. Speaking of parking, so we have standards in here that try to make better use of some of our underutilized public parking lots. So there's, there's things like shared parking, there's encouragement to do a, a residential permitting program, some of our outer, outer public parking lots, which are underutilized, significantly underutilized, try to keep people that are parking long-term out of the core area and into the, the, the edges of the downtown area. There's other things like stacked parking, if someone's doing a new residential or mixed-use developments, with each individual unit, you can do a stacked or a tandem parking, which is pretty common these days, so that the footprint of the parking lot is smaller and you get more parking spaces in there. We're also allowing stacked parking, if, you know, a restaurant's doing valet, they can't accommodate as many parking spaces as they need on site, they can have someone that's running the valet service so people can pull right up, get out of the car, and they are responsible for parking it. We also have other standards like something that actually is happening on Locust Street, which is what we call street-side parking. So if you're on a street and you really don't have a lot of space in front of your building to create a parking lot, and there's no on-street parking lot, you can create what was, what would serve as on-street parking and would be available to the public, but is actually on a private lot. And that's exactly what they have in front of their building. They created a series of parallel parking spots, which serves their building, but also serves the public in that, in that general area. So we're allowing some design, you know, waivers or design alter, altercation, alternatives so that we're creating more parking that's available to the public. In terms of open space, you know, the typical conventional standards say it's got to be 15% open space, and typically, that's a patch of grass down by the dumpster, this is more specific. You have to do something quality, something that's usable in terms of open space. And that can be everything from, in a neighborhood, your front yard, your garden, to, you know, to pathways, to other things like little plazas in front of your building, if it's a commercial building, rooftop terraces, pocket parks, forecourts. There's a variety of things you can do, but basically, depending on where you are in the district, you know, you'll be doing either a yard in the neighborhood, or you'll be doing something more, you know, publicly oriented in the core downtown area. And again, going back into the standards, you know, in terms of, you know, relationships between private development and the streets, setting up good standards so that people can do things in front of the building that sort of engage the public, makes it a better walkable district, makes the whole district more viable because there's, there's a lot of activity on the street. Specific design standards for, you know, outdoor terraces, and then other things like projecting signs, you know, blade signs are really good, especially in walkable districts, because you can see the shops and the restaurants that are ahead of you. Today, you're not, I don't think you've, you're allowed to do that today, you've got all wall signs, so you really can't see what's ahead of you. It's really important, in small village centers like Danvers, that you have good quality signage so that, you know, you portray yourself as a, you know, attractive village center, and it's easy for people to see, you know, what's up and down the street. So signs is part of the, the zoning package, and that's it. See how lively that is? That's what we're after.
That'd be 43.
Right. That's before the industrial zoning.
Lots of people want to know what year that is, so we'll figure that out.
What was our best guess? I think 1953 or something like that?
I think people want to buy the cars.
Yeah.
Because the cars.
Yeah. They're the bus, too. I like the way they queue people up for the bus in the middle of the street. Oh, is that a jury? Is that what that is?
Well, no question.
Martin just parked there permanently, right? Questions?
Got a question.
Yes, sir.
These 40R, these overlays, they incorporate chapter 40R?
Mm-hmm, that's what we did on the Maple Street district, yeah.
So that was, that was unique for the Hotline because we wanted that type of control over that area. But I'm not sure 40R is actually, maybe you can explain a little bit about what 40R is, the chapter 40R for the state and that type of control that the state takes over from local zone?
Well, they don't take over, but basically it's an incentive program for towns to adopt overlay zoning that allows for more housing units. And a percentage, 20% of those housing units have to be affordable. So basically, if you do that, as we did in Maple Street, I'll turn over to David here in a second, you get a payment from the state, an incentive payment for doing the zoning, and it's based on a number that could potentially go in that district. In our case, it was 111 units up in that Maple Street area, which converted to $200,000 that we can put back in a district to do all kinds of things. And then for every unit that's built after that, you get $3,000 per unit. The state doesn't really have any say, other than saying you got 20%, 20% of your developments have to, 20% of your housing units have to be affordable.
I understand that the state actually overrides any local zoning.
That's 40B.
That's 40B.
Well, 40R is like the carrot to 40B.
That's right, it's the carrot and 40B is the stick, that's right. More or less, yeah. Go ahead, David.
I was just gonna say, I think that's something, and I know Mr. Zubrick kind of hinted at it earlier, we've been very deliberate, so 40R, sorry this is gonna get a little in the weeds, but bear with us. The state adopted a number of years ago, a new statute, 40R, and as Mr. Doug intimated, 40B is the mandatory requirement for the Commonwealth to include 10% of affordable housing stock in every community in the Commonwealth. That has gone over very poorly and the implementation of the localities is not very good with that rule. So, and I want to say it was in the early 2000s, mid-2000s, the state incentivized, they tried to come up with a carrot. Okay, well, no one's doing that, how can we make this work? So they invented 40R. 40R basically sets a minimum threshold for density and an affordability requirement that's not as strict as the 40B statute would normally require. Well, in certain situations, yeah. If you do those, if you meet those thresholds and your zoning work, the state will give you an incentive payment, free, basically free cash for doing that. We did that in 2017 at the Hotline area. But I really want to make sure this point is crystal clear. We did this work, we've gone to a number of workshops, and out of this workshop, the planning board may decide to tweak these numbers yet again, based on feedback. At this time, that work done independently has arrived at those minimum thresholds without any concern about 40R. I mean, the first six to eight months of this process, we weren't, we were not chasing that program. We know where those numbers are, but we've tried to reach out to the community and set those numbers as they should be through the community planning process. At the end of that process, we were right there at the 40R threshold. So we did apply for this zoning to get into that program so that we could take advantage of the financial payment that they would give us for adopting it anyway. So again, I think Mr. Zubrick was kind of hinting at perhaps, we're letting that drive the process. I would respectfully push back on that because we want to do what's right for the community. And if it hits that threshold, great, if it doesn't hit that threshold, that's okay too. We're not, you know, I don't have a hotline to the state directing us what to do here at the local level. It'll ultimately be determined by town meeting. The planning board will shape this proposal to the best that they think it is for this town. And if that happens to qualify us for an incentive payment, great. We'll be getting some money from the state if this proposal tonight goes forward, but if this process takes that away, then that's okay too.
So again, I think the other point to make crystal clear that Erin was talking about, and no disrespect to Mr. Doug, whom I respect very much, 40R does not relinquish any local control whatsoever for the municipality over the zoning. Just for words, 40B absolutely does, which we are striving to not have happen.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a couple quick points, and hopefully what I say doesn't contradict what you think. But people are looking for specific examples. It's very hard to find one that comes with all of this. But three things that come to my mind are Lexington downtown, there's parts of it that very much have the diagram you were talking about. You have street fronts, you know, and the parking is behind, some buildings that have been taken down over the years, and it works very well.
Yep.
The downtown section of Belmont, which is near City Hall, that area does exactly the same thing, it's been very successful. And the town of Norwood has basically been working on this.
Norwood?
Norwood, for 25 years or so. Lexington's probably been at it for 40 years, has been very successful in Norwood. And Norwood is a fairly similar community in terms, you know, it has an auto mile, like Danvers has an auto, it has a one, it has, you know, commercial, so there's a lot of sort of population and so on similarly. And it's been very successful. And kind of the other point I'll make is, you know, you can bait what you're going to do, but I will argue that you need to do something because the way the current zoning is, is kind of sprawling, it's not attracting development. And an example of the kind of thing that happens now is if you go to CVS and head north towards the middle school, you know, there's kind of like missing teeth. There was, long ago, there was a Victorian house that sat right behind CVS. That was taken down to make the parking. Then there's the building, the post offices across the street. The other funeral home was taken down for the parking and for the church. And, you know, not criticizing what other people have done over time. And across the street from the church was a condominium that took down another house to put the parking in front. And that's, that's what's going to happen if it's not addressed in a different way. So that when the development pressure finally gets to the point, you know, where it's profitable to build something larger, people will take down the buildings that you have now and do a big box store type of, I mean, not that big, but my point is a box with parking next to it because that's what the current zoning allows.
Yep.
And so when someone wants to do the development, that's the only envelope they have. And so, you know, I strongly argue that something has to happen and everybody can obviously participate in what it should be. But I do think there is a fair urgent need to do something to address this or if that's the kind of action, as I say, like on Cona Street, that's going to happen on Maple Street.
It's interesting you mentioned Norwood, because I actually wrote the zoning last year for their downtown to allow residential under a mixed-use bylaw. And there we did the same thing. We basically looked at what, you know, what the scale of the downtown was, and it's a little bit bigger than we have here in Danvers. And we tried to make incentives so that we would keep the better buildings and just let people go above these old one-story buildings. It's an old streetcar community, so there's a lot of one-story buildings, very linear. So we don't want to lose those beautiful buildings, so we actually let higher density in, you know, areas in those, in those buildings above the ground floor versus some of the other buildings that are along the, along Washington Street. And it passed town meeting like 105 to 1 or something. And there's people already taking out applications to do something. And they saw that because, you know, that's a, that's a, it's got good bones. It's an interesting, it's a beautiful street, but they're really trying to get reinvestment in a lot of those buildings. And the only way they can do that, they figured out, is by introducing mixed use and some residential.
And it has worked, I mean, they've done, they've done things to encourage restaurants to be there. And actually, you know, I'd say Danvers has bared pretty well compared to many towns. But if you go there at night, it's very busy. There's a lot of people on the street, you know, they've been to the street skate project. And, but it is, it is vibrant.
Yeah.
And people park, you know, behind buildings, you know, over time, just the natural development pressure, people buy buildings, they can dump, they can park them. But, you know, it happens on the back of the buildings, not along the street like this has been happening on Cona Street.
I mean, I'll give you some other examples. I live on the South Shore in Situate, you know, about 10 years ago introduced residential and mixed use to their downtown front street. And that used to be a place where there was a lot of vacancies and a lot of the businesses closed in the wintertime because, you know, it's sort of a, you know, tourist community in the summertime, people come into the harbor there and so on. And introducing, you know, just a handful of mixed-use and residential projects to the downtown has really brought that whole district back. In fact, it's considered one of the best main streets south of Boston these days. And it really works. And what it is, if you look at the people, we interviewed people that lived downtown, it's mostly empty nesters, people downsized, they love the community, they want to stay in the community. Or they have a boat and they want to be close to the water. Or they just want to be close to shops and services. And it's working.
And I guess, unless you, you have to really like divorce yourself of everything you think you know about housing units when you explore this, because, and I don't say this to be derogatory, but, you know, 90% of college students or recent college students have never owned a lawn, they've never owned a pool lawn. And in, and in the surveys, they would rather have an iPhone than a car.
That's true.
So, you know, you can't think about like suburban development and think about downtown. And the goals and objectives are very different for what they're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
For us.
Well, a lot of them, when they just get out of school, they don't want to be in suburbs. They want to be downtown. They don't want a car, they don't need a car.
It's a different kind of American dream. They don't want to, you know, have that lot and have it long. They want to be downtown where they can jump on the train, you know, even for city.
Well, maybe we can't afford it.
They can't afford it too, yeah.
No, what I'm saying is, maybe we haven't made that decision ourselves. Maybe we've made that decision based on what we're informed.
So, well, and that's to be that. There was a stat I saw in millennials and everyone's talking about them driving kind of this new urbanism movement. But there's actually more millennials in the suburbs than in the cities. The problem is, they're in the parents' basement. So that's kind of what, again, we're trying to bring a little bit of diversity to the housing stock and offer some different units. And again, it may not be for the folks in this room. We are trying to cater to a slightly different demographic. So I thought we saw a few other hands want to be respected for everyone's time.
Quickly, all I want to say is that the discussion that we just heard in regards to the interjection of commercial or industrial to a residential area like that, it's still going to exist. This is an overlay. So what are the incentives for the developer to improve that property from a industrial-commercial to a residential-commercial structure? I mean, there's really no incentives to speak of.
Well, I think if you, what's stopping them from utilizing the zoning that they have today?
Well, that's, that's because you've limited the height on the buildings.
55 feet. Right now in I-1, it's 55 feet with very shallow setbacks.
And no residential.
And no residential. And it's been there for 75 years and we have maybe 25 to 33% build out in our industrial districts downtown. So I think to your point, I think to your point, this zoning is better calibrated to today's marketplace where residential, where we're going to use residential to leverage the other community development benefits we want from reinvestment downtown.
What you're going to create is more congestion and density. Because that's the nature of the zone, correct?
I'm not going to agree that we're bringing congestion. I understand it's, we are talking about a little bit more density than we have today because we don't allow it at all today.
That's right. And one of the, one of the biggest problems, I think, with our zoning, at least when we went through the Hotline area, is this kind of population that you're adhering to is dependent on transportation access. There is no transportation hub that we have in Danvers that we can go out to other areas without a vehicle.
We're working on that.
Well, I know, it's not, it's not going to happen. MBTA is not going to give it to you.
They might.
Beverly has the railroad station.
Yep.
And other communities, Newbury, Newbury Ports, they have the railroad station. So that's a different environment.
We have an express bus from downtown to Salem, Deville.
Yeah, it's a Liberty Station hall.
I understand that it's not what people think, but I think, again, that argument is a little bit of a trap because that's a problem we face today.
Absolutely, we face it for you.
And it's not going to get better, I mean, the T's not going to give us service today given the numbers that we have. So we have to, and this is a multi, dealing with, dealing with better transit options in Danvers is going to take a number of solutions, of which getting a bit more density downtown to increase ridership will help us achieve some of those other goals. But I would also say, and this goes kind of back to the point of what are we building? Today's demographic is very different. It may not be, and I know, I'll pick on Jim Sears because I know he's man enough to take it. You know, Jim on the planning board is kind of, you know, he's our parking, you know, he's tough on our parking. That's okay. But again, when we're talking to someone who's 30 years old that's choosing to come back to the North Shore after living and going to college and maybe they're in Somerville today, they live differently than how I live and how Jim lives. We don't have to house every millennial in the metropolitan area. 20 Locust just needs to find, you know, 18 to 20 people that want to live with one car. My neighbor, I live in, near Holton, Richmond. The neighbor across the street from me, two adults, one car. They take the bus, they carpool. I mean, there are people in this community that do make an effort to have a different approach to transportation. And I think, again, I don't want to foreclose the opportunity for this community to be home to somebody simply because I don't want to live that way or Jim doesn't want to live that way. We're going to make sure that these developments can park themselves and that they mitigate their transportation impacts on the network. That's a prerequisite to getting in.
And marketplace will drive that.
Well, I think what you missed was, there are density bonuses and there are concessions to the developer who would, which would encourage the developer to do residential building downtown. Because you could not put 25 units on one acre in this type of area until we allowed that zoning. And that first came in on Locust Street through the ZBA, that was the Zoning Board of Appeals ruling. They came in front of us with a site plan approval. So that was kind of the footprint for what we're talking about. But that would never have been approved before. But there were density bonuses that were allowed because you were minimizing parking. So instead of having a two-bedroom requiring two parking spaces, maybe you're required to have one and a half, you know, such a thing. There are incentives to developers to do this type of building.
And it was an old, it was an old industrial building. They want to revitalize that old building, they want to reinvest in that property. There's lots of properties like it in downtown.
And Hotline, I mean, Hotline did put an application, 2Tad placed down, is a one-year demolition delay bylaw now that had been approved by the town meeting. So they did go through that process, so that's part of the delay. And I do know that there are people that have looked at that site. There's a lot of cleanup that's going to be required at that site for asbestos and lead paint and so on. So there is, there is, you know, activity going on at that site. So I don't think we should wait until they decide to do something. You know, we're planning for the town. The town has expended a tremendous amount of time and effort with staff and our boards over the years, looking at industrial one, looking at now a commercial one, with motivation from the town manager and the selectmen wanting us to look at this downtown area. We've been doing that. The town has expended, you know, a fair amount of money on Ted, who's done a tremendous amount of job, and other experts who've been doing this. Based upon studies that have done this, you know, over the years. And again, it's a footprint, it's a plan. We're doing planning here, this is planned. We've had a tremendous amount of meetings, you know, in town involvement. And I appreciate everyone coming out and, you know, we're trying to shape this not just for us, but for the future. And this gives other opportunities to developers and property owners. Doesn't mean it's going to be all built out in a year, two years, 10 years, 20 years. But you have a footprint and that's where, that's where it is.
So I think, given the time approaching the two-hour mark, please feel free, we, David and I have our cards. There'll be future events going forward, future outreach. This wasn't the one and only chance that you have. Like I said to you, we are more than happy to give you whatever time, answer whatever questions you need. Again, we may agree to disagree on certain aspects of it, but we want you to understand what we're proposing, why we're proposing it. Again, we'd love to get to a vision. Again, we'd love to get to a vision that everyone understands. So whatever you need from us, please feel free to reach out to us. We're here and want to know what you think of this. The materials will get on the website and make sure that everything is updated. So that's that. I really appreciate everyone coming. Any other closing thoughts from planning board, Ted, David?
Look at DB. Just look at downtown DB. You know, I know they have the flooding, but they've cured the flooding. They are starting for development downtown, so.
Okay. Thank you all so much. Looking for a motion to a judge, I was saying.
I was like, what's going on, a P?!